I call the November 13th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Ms. Pinion, can I get a roll call?
Ron Haberline.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Andrew Carr. Sam Skoll.
Here.
Matt Constantine. Yana Semenova.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
One of the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing or a public work session tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
I currently have no attendees on Zoom.
Outside of Planning Director Bates Shilla is on Zoom with us.
She's a panelist.
She's a panelist. She is here.
Good evening, Miranda. Okay. Since we have no one on Zoom that is looking to testify and we have no one in City Hall, let's move on to the consideration of the minutes. The October 9th, 2024 Planning Commission minutes were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? All right. Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. Next up on the list is our work session for Housing Our Future. Will staff please prepare the staff report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Haberline. Dan Polly, Planning Manager, and we're happy to be here on this topic this evening. We have Kim Rybold and Beth Goodman. Beth's with Echo Northwest. And they'll be presenting. This is an important conversation I'm sure you've seen in the packet and will be continued over the coming months. And we look forward to this discussion with you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kim.
Thank you, Dan. Kim Rybold, Senior Planner and Project Manager on the city's side for the Housing Our Future project. Just a little bit of quick background before we get into tonight's presentation. Our last work session with you was back in July, and that was the joint work session we had with City Council. And at that point, we presented you with some of the initial technical work and data from the housing needs and capacity analysis. So that is a document that does a lot of assessment of land, where there is buildable land, and trying to figure out if we have enough buildable land within the city to accommodate anticipated growth over the next 20 years. There's some other data in that document as well, particularly about demographics and an initial step on assessing future needs. So we are still working on getting some of that additional feedback that we heard from that meeting, as well as some of the additional edits. And that will be a document that we wrap up into a final form early next year. But since that meeting, we've had a couple additional meetings with the project task force. And we've started to get into the discussion of potential strategies to meet the needs that are identified over the next 20 years. And so that is the housing production strategy piece of the project. So the primary focus tonight is going to be starting to look into some of the work that the task force has done around potential actions to meet Wilsonville's future housing needs, as well as some additional information that really starts getting into what we call a contextualized housing need. So moving beyond just the data that we heard about in the last work session, but start thinking about some additional needs that are present in the Wilsonville community and how through some interviews we've done and some other outreach, we're working on having a more nuanced understanding of the future housing needs. So with that, I think one thing I would impart before I turn it over to Beth to give her presentation is that, you know, we're still, we've kind of narrowed down potential actions a little bit, or we still have some way to go. And so we're hoping that the input you're able to provide us with tonight will help us in that regard. But when we think about some of these priorities, I think for the purposes of, as you listen to the presentation and start thinking about the feedback that you're going to give us, I want to underscore that priorities and importance are not necessarily the same thing. And so I think a lot of these potential actions address things that I think are all important. But what we want to look at as a city is where we should be focusing Wilsonville's efforts, Wilsonville's time, Wilsonville's financial resources to best address these future housing needs. So just something to keep in mind throughout your discussion. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Beth. Actually, I'm going to share my screen here for a moment and get this up and running. So bear with me here while I do that.
And I just want to make sure that Nicole is online with us also as a panelist. There she is.
I'm here, Beth.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Introducing also Nicole Underwood of Echo Northwest, who is providing a lot of great assistance in this project as well. So with that, Beth, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. See if your mouse will work from way over here. So what we're going to do here is we're going to go over a little bit of the basics, reminding you of the schedule and a little bit of information about understanding housing needs. Understand that we've got many more pages, much more information that we're not bringing here here tonight because it would just round you. And it would prevent us from getting to the policy discussion. So what we really want to do here tonight is discuss the actions that we've been talking about for inclusion in the HPS and have you help us make sure that we're including and perhaps excluding some of the right actions. So as Kim was mentioning, we started this project back earlier this year with the housing needs and capacity analysis. We've been working on this idea of contextualizing housing needs. So understanding housing needs beyond the basic data that we've got. And we've been stepping into strategy development. We expect to conclude the project with adoption by about June of 2025. So this is an important meeting, important for getting your input on this. As a reminder, a housing production strategy is a six-year action plan that identifies the strategies or actions that the city is going to use to meet its identified housing needs. So one of the important things that we're doing in contextualizing the housing needs is naming what those housing needs are. And I'll talk about those some as we go through here a little bit. The actions in the HPS need to be pointing directly at those housing needs. You also should think about the fact that it's a six-year action plan. One, we're not going to accomplish in developing the HPS any of the actions. There's going to be a lot of future discussion about them and future public input as you're looking at how do we, the city, implement those actions? And there's a whole process for sort of a mid-project check-in with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, who are the regulators who are monitoring what the city is doing around its housing production strategy. And it may well be that some of the actions that make it into the HPS are actions that later on you realize, oh, that wasn't the right action, or we need to modify this action, or hey, now there's this new opportunity for funding or something else that didn't exist before. So we need to change our HPS a little bit. I think all cities are going to end up in that position at one point or another. And I think that's fine. We're asking the city to really set up an action plan that the city is going to, you know, make a good faith effort, going to really try to implement the actions in there. And so part of what we, I think, need to think about is the capacity of the city to implement these actions. Like if we had 60 actions in your housing production strategy, I think we, as a consulting firm, would have failed you because that's a lot of actions to do with limited staff and limited budget. And maybe some of those actions wouldn't be very powerful actions. So keep that all in the back of your mind as we're thinking about these things. We've been doing engagement throughout the project. We're going to talk in a few minutes about some of the themes we've been hearing through the engagement. What we've got coming up is a few more meetings with our task force to solidify and finalize the actions that we're going to have in the housing production strategy that they'll recommend for inclusion in that. We're going to be having some targeted discussions with Latin organizations to make sure that the actions we're talking about are culturally appropriate and look at opportunities through implementing some of the actions to make sure that your Latin population is included in the thinking of how to do some of these. We've got a conversation guide that's ongoing. I think you guys have heard about that, where that is sort of outreach done from the grassroots. So from people like you, from the City Council, other leaders in the community who want to have conversations about housing and housing needs and what to do about it. And then later on, next late winter or spring, we'll be having an open house that discusses some of what we are putting into the housing production strategy to the community. So very brief, I'm not going to give you too much data here. As we're thinking about housing needs, first of all, we're thinking about it in the context of income. And these are incomes for a four-person household. So for instance, a household that's four people that earns median household income for the larger Portland region would earn about $116,900. They'd be able to afford monthly housing costs without being cost burdened of $2,920 or a sales price of, you know, maybe up to about $380,000. If you think about your lower-income households, they would have income of about $70,000. And that would be about 60% of median family income. And they would be able to afford monthly housing costs of about $1,750. When we look at your average rents in 2023, I don't think they're a lot different right now. They're about $2,000. And that was not for newly built housing, that's just for overall housing. So if you think about who's going to build housing that's affordable to households that earn 60% or less of median family income, that's generally going to be your nonprofit affordable housing providers. It's generally going to have state and federal funds in it. And the city can also play roles, as we'll discuss in this, in building that kind of housing. If you look between 60% and 80% of median family income, that starts to be when rental housing is affordable to some of those households. Newly built, there's not a whole lot of newly built housing that's affordable in that income range, and that is an important income range in part because it's hard to get newly built affordable housing there because it's market rate, there's not as much subsidy available for it. So some of the actions we'll talk about really target that kind of thing. And then when you look at the median home sales price of $585,000, a household would require income of about $180,000 or more than 150% of median family income to afford that housing. And so if you look at in Wilsonville, about 25% of your households have income above 120% of median family income. The focus of the HPS is really on those households with income that is lower than that and looking at opportunities for housing that's affordable to people in those income brackets. This is a pretty standard distribution of housing by different income levels. It's not all that different from a lot of communities that we see across the Portland region. And then we're thinking about housing, housing needs beyond just your data about income. So housing for people experiencing homelessness, housing for people of color or different racial or ethnic groups, housing for people over 65, housing for people with disabilities. Each of these groups has different challenges in accessing housing. For all of them, they're more likely to have relatively lower income compared to the overall average in Wilsonville. And they each have different challenges, including accessing housing without encountering discrimination. So I'd like Nicole to talk us through a little bit about the themes from our unmet housing needs in Wilsonville. And these are themes that we got through engagement with different groups of people so far. So Nicole?
Thanks, Beth. And just as a reminder, we've conducted the community engagement that you saw on the previous slide. We've also had stakeholder interviews with service providers and residents. And then, of course, our task force discussions. We also reviewed past engagement that the city has conducted since the city has already done a lot of work in this space. And so all of those things are contributing to the themes you see here. And these themes are going beyond the need for just housing that is affordable. So for the Latin population, we heard about the need for larger units to accommodate what are often larger families, so extended and multi-generational families. We heard about the immigrant and the refugee communities from service providers, noting that they often have an increased need for rental assistance, eviction prevention services, and financial education to navigate the US housing system, which is often different from where they're from. We also heard about needs for people with disabilities. So many requiring housing with different accessibility features to facilitate independent living. We also heard that some people with disabilities are also on fixed incomes and so face additional challenges to meeting income requirements when they are looking for rental units. This is similar to what we heard for seniors, many of which are on fixed incomes as well. A big theme that we did hear for seniors is the desire to age in place. And so that might look like access to a single-level home or other accessibility features. We also heard that housing with adequate cooling or air conditioning is very important for this demographic as they may be disproportionately impacted by high heat events. And then lastly, for seniors, we also heard that some may benefit from assistance in finding and accessing the available resources, whether that's, you know, for upgrading their homes or keeping them in a good state. And they may need additional support accessing those services, especially if they're only available online. For people experiencing homelessness in Wilsonville, we heard about the need for support services integrated with their housing, as many of these residents do struggle with mental health, addiction, or other health-related issues. And then the last group that we did hear about were college students, which have some unique challenges. They often have multiple roommates to manage costs, which can lead to financial risks when not all of those roommates are on the lease. These groups often need access to housing with shared facilities. So that kind of dorm-style, shared kitchen, shared bathrooms. And then we also heard that college students and young adults may also benefit from financial education to better understand how to budget for and remain in their housing. And before I do hand it back to Beth, I did want to note, too, that affordability is a shared concern across all of these groups. Specifically, what we heard was that rising rental costs, hidden fees, and the high HOAs are really causing some additional financial burden for some of these residents in Wilsonville. And with that, I'll give it back to Beth.
And so before I go and talk about some of the housing policies we've been talking about, are there any questions about the basic information we've presented you? It's fine if there's not. Okay. All right, we'll continue on. All right, so I'm going to pop through the next few slides and then get to your discussion question and then come back to where you want to be when you're having that discussion. So one of the things we want to ground you in here is the city's role in housing development. Development can occur when you've got land, public policy, market feasibility, and capital that all align together, that work together to allow development to happen. The city can directly influence public policy, such as zoning or density or design requirements, that allow a developer to build a profitable project. And of course, this is for market-rate housing. Affordable housing is a little bit different still in some of these considerations. Cities, of course, have influence on land, looking at how much land is in the community, working with Metro, for instance, where you're looking at, say, urban growth boundary expansions, that kind of thing. And then infrastructure provision, you have roles in that as well. Of course, the landowner and the developers also have roles in managing the land and paying for infrastructure. Cities can have a limited influence on market feasibility through things like property tax abatements, that kind of thing, looking at the fees and development charges you have. Cities rarely play a big role in the capital stack. So I don't know of very many cities that, say, offer low-interest loans for construction, but that's something that certainly a city could do. It's just not something we've seen cities embracing very hard. So the city is one among many players in the development, the development world. So the existing strategies in Wilsonville, I don't want to go through all of these. There's quite a lot. You've done quite a lot. As we've talked to our task force and other people in engaging this, there's been suggestions for things to do that the city is already doing in many cases. So we're building on a base of the existing strategies. We don't need to repeat those, but there's always ways that the city can make things a little bit better. And so what we gave you for this meeting tonight was a memorandum dated October 30th that has a lot of different actions in it listed, as well as some of the actions that we considered earlier on and set aside because we don't want to give you 60 actions in your HPS. We're going to limit it to something you can reasonably do. So as Kim said, the importance, many of these things that we're going to talk about are important. And you and the City Council have to help us understand what's a higher priority. And then later in the project, we'll be setting up the timing of the actions. So when will you be implementing each of the actions? And that's not necessarily implementing the highest priority action first because sometimes you have to do things, you know, this action, and then you can build on that action and so on and so forth. So I just don't want to confuse us too much. And our lettering, ABC, that's not indicating importance. It's just so that we could easily say, here's item A, here's item D. So the feedback from our task force was from that memorandum, each of these actions on this slide should be further considered for inclusion in the HPS. These seem like important and higher priority actions to include in the HPS. And we'll come back to them so that you can have whatever discussion you'd like to have about them. And then the actions that the task force was recommending for not including in the HPS are here on this screen. And you'll see that we've got a few of them in yellow, in that yellow box, because we think that these are things that really should be considered further as we're going into this. And we're looking for your opinion and the City Council's opinion, especially on something like item D, the administrative review process. Our task force doesn't do that day-to-day, whereas you all, as the Planning Commission, you're very familiar with that. And so you may have opinions that are differently informed than the task force. I'll come back to these last two slides in a few moments. So what our goal is, is to come out of this meeting and the City Council's meeting with a narrowed-down, targeted set of impactful actions for affordable and attainable housing. So what can Wilsonville do more of or better? So based on what we've presented you previously in the HNCA and the input we've been hearing from project interviews, which we can always inform you more if you have questions, which actions should be included in the HPS to meet the city's housing needs? Should any actions that we're talking about here be removed from consideration? Or are there others that should be added? As the HPS is being implemented, I think the Planning Commission would be certainly lead on implementation of these actions that are on the screen. You can see Action C and Action S are in a lighter color of gray because those were ones that were suggested, perhaps not for inclusion in the HPS. And just so you know, if there's an action that the city decides, we're just not ready to do that, it can go into what we'll call, you know, recommendations for future consideration. And so that might be actions that the city does outside of the HPS, something like adopting affirmatively furthering fair housing as a city housing policy in the comprehensive plan, that's a pretty simple action. Maybe that should just be done not being in the HPS. And that's, you know, it's an easy thing for the city to do as it updates its comprehensive plan at some point here. So there's ways to put things sort of in a semi-parking lot. And so our questions for you are what feedback do you have about the, especially the land use-related actions? Do they accurately portray the scope of potential actions and how they relate to needed housing? So what we've given you now is essentially the two-sentence description of what we're talking about. By the time the HPS is done, each of these actions will have a cut sheet that's a page to two pages long that describes more thoroughly what it is, gives us information about the different partners you'd need to work on with these and potential implementation steps, which a lot of the land use actions would start, or start very close to the start, would be engaging the Planning Commission in discussion about this action. And what information would be helpful for future consideration of actions? What are we not telling you that you'd like to know more about? So in talking with the task force, where we first started, we did a survey with them. And where we first started was the actions that were coming up as lower priority. And could you go back to that one? We could start there because these are the ones that, you know, potentially are being, you know, not included in the HPS. Or we could start at the ones that are higher priority for the task force. I'm open to wherever you'd like to start.
And before we do, I'll just add as well, just to give you some context about where we're headed next with these. So we will be having a work session with City Council at the beginning of December. And so where we're at in this phase of the process, we're not, you know, firmly saying, yes, this is the exact list of actions we're going to have in the HPS. Because, you know, as Beth has noted, we've got six years and there's a level of commitment and accountability to these things from the state. So we want to be very thoughtful about where we're headed and what we can do. What I'll note about a couple of these items in the yellow box is that they deal with funding and they deal with staff, sort of staff resources. And depending on which actions rise to the top as part of this, they might or might not be pieces that are more critical to implementing those actions. And so they're kind of off to the side there. But where we're going to head with this is after we talk to Council, we're going to flesh some of these out a little more. And then ultimately, Council will be in a place early next year to, you know, the task force will provide additional feedback and then really say, okay, here's the set of X number of actions that we're going to put in the HPS. So I just say that because I don't want you all to feel pressured, like, you know, you know, we have to come up with the exact list. That's not what we're asking of you tonight. What we are asking is the pieces that can help inform City Council, particularly as they relate to your expertise with the development code and the comprehensive plan. And then, you know, just ideas of things you would add to that discussion so that we can make sure we're including that as we do further work.
So is it okay to start with the items that might be cut?
It's fine.
Okay. If you want more information about any of these, I can tell you. I think the only one that might need, that obviously to me would need a little more information is the tax exemptions. So you already have a tax exemption for low-income affordable housing. So you already exempt from property taxes your income-restricted housing. So this one, we're talking about in item J, potentially looking at a property- So this one, we're talking about in item J, potentially looking at a property tax exemption called the multi-unit property tax exemption, that is for that housing that's generally between 60% and 80% of median family income, affordable in there, can be affordable above that. This is something where the city establishes a zone for that, where that will apply, and establishes its criteria for granting it, and any developer who wants to apply for it makes an application, and the city council decides whether or not to accept that. It's something that there's a lot of discretion and control from the city on. A lot of cities have done this, it's for multifamily rental housing. The other tax exemption that we pulled forward that was interesting is the homeowners, homebuyers' limited tax exemption, I've got that name not exactly right, but it's for homebuyers, the homebuyer opportunity limited tax exemption, I can't imagine why I couldn't remember that. It's for property tax exemptions for some new residential development for lower-income households. Not a lot of cities across Oregon have implemented this. Portland, I think, is the primary city who has, because it has a higher administrative overhead, and tracking this from household to household as the house is bought and then sold is very difficult to do. So Portland, I think, just applies it to the first owner of the unit and doesn't apply it to future owners, I think is the way Portland does it. So those two, just a little bit of information about those two. And of course, by exempting from property tax, even if it's for a limited period of time, like the multi-unit tax exemption applies for up to 10 years, that is money that would not be going into the city's general fund until the housing has been there long enough that the tax exemption doesn't apply anymore. So the public good you're getting with both of these is making either rental or homeownership a little more affordable. So you can ask questions about any of the other ones that are on here, or I'll direct you to one or two.
Commissioner Hendricks, you want to start it off?
Yeah, let's see if I can ask this in a clear way, because my mind's still trying to differentiate. I think with this list, just at a high level, before I dive into specific things, are there, is there like a bucket where we truly, like, do not recommend these on behalf of, like, I guess, don't recommend versus if we had the capacity and if we were able to, we would want the opportunity to pursue these things? I just, for some reason, my mind, I'm trying to differentiate, like, if something comes across of, like, live-work-living units, it's like, well, if that comes across our, you know, conversations, that's something that obviously, like, we have opportunity to support that doesn't cost anything extra. So I'm just trying to, in my mind, figure out, like, which of these are, yeah, truly not recommended versus, like, we just don't have the capacity.
So I think for context, just to give you, I think, a little bit more behind the scenes of the task force thought process.
Yeah.
Because I think that's what you're getting at, is the why. And the why for some of these, I don't, you know, it varies from item to item. Some of the items, there was discussion around, you know, is this really an action that is best led by the city versus is this something where the county might be more of a lead resource? So, you know, kind of thinking about how much of what the action is, is really something that feels at home with the city. And you'll see that for a lot of the actions in the memorandum, that it does discuss what the city role is. I think some of it was probably a discussion around impact, and, you know, honestly, there were a couple of these that they just didn't really discuss, it just, you know, didn't seem to be of interest to anybody specifically in the group. And so I think it's a bit of a mix. I think, you know, based on what I'm remembering of the discussion, one of the things about D, because D was called out specifically, that, huh, well, you know, I just think nobody really understands or knows about this, but, you know, maybe there is a different discussion that happens with the planning commission about it. So I can give that as an example of, you know, if you were to look at something like that and say, well, hey, you know, I think maybe this should be still included for consideration, that's the feedback we want to hear. But, you know, if there's an action up here and, you know, you're just not feeling strongly that this should be considered in those HPS, then this is where, you know, I think if you feel like you're okay with it being on this list, just, you know, let it be on this list, or if you feel like there's a compelling reason to pull something out, or to ask us why maybe it shouldn't be pulled off this list, I think that is really helpful feedback for us to have here.
Okay, great. Yeah, that helps. And yeah, I want to respect the work that the task force has done at this point as well, so it makes sense. I'm going to process a little bit and hand it over to someone else.
Do you want me to give you a few examples, running down this a little bit, if that would help? Okay. So the live-work, I'm just not sure that that was perceived as a very high need. It's certainly something that's good to have, and, you know, might be easy to do, and maybe the city should just plain do it. So it's an option. The housing rehab and weatherization, you've got nonprofits that are already doing that. The county has a rehabilitation program, the city could have a role, and it might be even a minor role. So you could have, you know, without an HPS action, you could have, you know, information at your planning counter about the different programs, for instance. The city, if it had money, could put money into them and help the nonprofits do more of what they're doing. The rental assistance, that's just plain about having enough money to do rental assistance. And I think that one. The homelessness plan, I'm not sure why that wasn't getting a lot of look at. I think homelessness is certainly a difficult issue for discussion, but we didn't necessarily have other recommendations at this point, because the city's a little early on in its journey around homelessness. Adopting the affirmative furthering fair housing as a policy, the city could just do that. You know, you don't have to have it as an action, it's a good thing to do. The tenant protection program, that really is connected more with one of the other programs that we're looking at, a home inspection program, and that's one I kind of wonder if the city might want to keep on its list. And then the actions for further discussion, I think we've already talked about that a little bit.
Commissioner Willard?
Most of these were consistent with the ones that were low on my priority list, so I don't have any further questions.
Commissioner Semenova?
Could you share more about D, for instance? What that might look like?
Would you like me to start with this one?
Yes, please.
Just, this is really kind of a process type of action, and so, as you're aware right now, when we have a development application for residential development, that, you know, might involve several different types of review, it typically all happens at once, and it typically goes through a public hearing process before the development review board. There has been, you know, both through state legislation over the years, a push for more clear and objective standards. So a lot of the work that you all have been doing with your master planning in Frog Pond East and South and the development code there, I think is a prime example of taking a master plan and then developing very clear standards, so that, you know, if somebody has a development application and they're meeting all of the standards, there isn't much discretion as to whether or not it's approvable. And so the notion behind this, and I will also invite Mr. Polly to feel free to add anything he would like to add, is that there's also been a lot of conversation at the state level about, well, if you've already got a clear and objective standard, and in theory, if you're meeting that standard, it should be approved, you know, should that really be going through a public hearing process when there isn't discretion under consideration? And so what that does is it can speed up the process of review, which, again, can save money on the side of the development team, which can help lower the cost of the housing, but then as well, it creates additional certainty by not having to go through a public hearing process for something clear and objective. And so this is something, we have the sense, you know, we don't know what future legislative sessions will bring from the state, but we do see that this is going to be something that continues to come up, and there is some guidance out there based on some legislation that has already passed about, you know, how this potentially could be implemented. But really, it's just about, you know, what can we do from a procedural standpoint to help reduce housing development costs? Mr. Polly, would you add anything to that?
After all of our conversations on it, I think you were very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was one that I was thinking maybe should be on the other list.
So following up on that, does anybody object to having it on the list of things that are included in the HPS? Do you think it's worthy, important, in other words?
May I add something? So when I started volunteering, I started on the development review board, and something that we did, yeah, I feel like was a common experience, was the expectations going into those meetings of, like, especially with public comment, of if I feel a certain way about a place, then, and I give my public comment, then maybe we can vote this thing down, or that kind of approach, when it was that clear objective standards that we were going by. And so it just felt like a false sense of hope or opportunity to comment on something that, like, unless the comment was specifically about these clear and objective standards, which is, it's a lot of information to navigate, then it just, it felt almost, yeah, it's just confusing, I think for, I know, I was on the board, and I was, I had to be constantly checked of, like, yeah, is this clear and objective? So just going through that, I do think this is something that should be considered for the other list as well.
Any other comments on that?
You have anything on this one specifically, Commissioner Skoll? Yeah, okay. I think, I think for me, on D, maybe it's, I guess I like the idea of further discussion. You know, it may not, to me, it doesn't rise to the top of, we need to go do this now, but it's definitely something that we can continue talking about, because there's, I completely understand where Commissioner Hendricks is coming from and some of the challenges on being on DRB, and that feeling like there's an opportunity to make a change, when that's really not the case. It's more of just an assessment of, does this meet the standards, yes or no? And if yes, you approve, and if no, you go back and try again.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess this is the discussion part. Yeah, and I think it's, this just seems kind of like low-hanging fruit to me, like, it is such a process, and if this is something, like, it's something that we can do with existing staff, and, yeah, I don't, it seems like something that is more feasible and something that, maybe it's not a high priority, but it can get done quickly and save you a lot of time in the long run, that might allow you to do some of these other actions on the list, so I guess that's what I'm thinking about, too.
Okay, I think that's, that seems to be what you were wanting to say.
Commissioner Skoll? Yeah, go for it.
So comment, a quick question. On letter M, support rental assistance programs, aren't there an abundance of other programs out there to do that?
There are other agencies that do rental assistance. Some cities have looked at rental assistance on their own as well. There's, there is a nearly infinite need for rental assistance, and so that's why it's on the list. If the city had the money for it, would the city do it? And I, of course, can't answer that question, but that's really highly dependent on there being money to do rental assistance.
Would they typically have a limit on how much and how long?
I don't think I could answer that for you. There is usually, I think, an amount of rental assistance that's probably a little standardized, that a household could apply for based on their income, certainly. So if I was a higher-income household, I don't think I'd be eligible for rental assistance, of course. If I was a lower-income household, I'd almost, you know, I could well be eligible for it. And then how long, I'm not really sure that there's a limitation other than the limitation of the funds available.
And secondly, just a comment, the opportunity to sit in on the meeting earlier in the week, or Commissioner Willard, and, you know, in observation of the whole program, I almost tend to think that there should be two sides to this, you know, something, a side that has to do with the new product build and new housing, and then a side for rental activity and, you know, how that's managed, and, because there seems to be a group of activities that are specific to each side.
Yes.
That are kind of mixed into this, and it might be good to segregate those out, and might make a little bit more work, but it kind of, you have segregated plans there that basically attack both of the, both sides of the equation.
Certainly, we can certainly organize in the HPS actions based on, is it about developing new housing, or is it about addressing existing housing issues? So housing stability, certainly, and a housing production strategy is supposed to do both of those. So that's a good suggestion for how we organize it in the end, and then realize that each of these different things, none of them are your silver bullet, because there is no silver bullet unless you have a big pile of money, and they build on each other. So doing certain things, say, on the other list, there's things about land banking and working with community land trusts, or scaling your system development charges potentially to different unit sizes, those things will build on each other. You know, having a different administrative review process for residential development that may well contribute its own little bit of making it easier to develop housing, so... And they build on the existing actions that you have in place, so your existing policies.
Thank you.
Certainly. Are there other comments on this list, please?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think, I think for me, you know, my comments, I'm generally okay with this list. I think C, just from my experience, maybe it's something we want to consider. The opportunities that it provides for small businesses and being able to defray costs there, I think is, could be a compelling argument to have that on there, knowing that it's not a lot of cost to the city to implement code changes to support that. So that's the one that jumps out to me. And then I guess the other real question that I have is, how do we ensure that we get Chair Carr's input taken into account, since he provided a great email?
Yes. I can certainly, for some of this, give you that feedback. I don't want to read it all verbatim right now, but if you all would find it helpful, we can certainly, staff can share this feedback.
I think for me, I just wanted to make sure that we have the correct mechanism to make sure that it was incorporated into the rest of the commission's comments.
Yes, and so I have that information, and essentially, you know, he went so far as to rank everything, it was very detailed, very helpful, and so I think the comments he provided for the actions that move forward, we will be sure to include.
Okay.
That as we further assess, and then in terms of action prioritization, you know, his kind of top handful of actions is reflected in the actions that would be proposed to further consider.
Great.
Kim, maybe you can provide that to the email to Paula, and we'll attach it to the minutes?
Sure, yes, can do that.
So the intention, I believe, is what we're taking to the city council is a brief memorandum that summarizes probably a little action-by-action, what we heard from the task force and what we heard from the planning commission, including your chair's comments.
Okay, great.
All right, shall I pop back to the other list? Actually, I need... Actually, I need Kim to pop for me. So, these are the actions recommended for further consideration. We can talk about any of these that you'd like to talk about. And I think the question that I would have on my mind is really, do you think any of these should not be considered further? Do you think any of these are just not the right actions? And if anybody's wondering, CLT is a community land trust.
All right, we'll start on the other side this time. Commissioner Skoll?
There's a lot here, so, and I'll just follow with, you know, when I participated in the meeting the other day, you know, one of the things that jumped out at me was focusing on the rental housing inspection program, you know, the, you know, just comments for the rest of the commissioners here is, you know, I've done a lot of apartment inspections here in the last couple of years, and I see different levels of, you know, new apartments, and then older apartments. The older's average about 20 years old. Some of them are in good shape, but actually, the majority of them are a mess. And they, you know, and it could be anything from construction issues, or structural issues, to housekeeping, to fire and safety, and, you know, mold, you know, all kinds of different things. And having a homeowner, a city-based program that can partner with HOAs, or whoever, in the process, to keep those homes safe and sound, and in order for the renters, I think, would be very valuable.
And so, that action is really about, you know, the condition of the physical structures. Action U, which was on our list on the next slide, is really about the tenant protection program. That's more the people-based actions. These two, you know, often, they don't have to, they often will go hand in hand, so that you've got a way for people to, to, you know, get help, for the city to do some, you know, compliance testing, for fair housing, that kind of thing, working with landlords to help, to help resolve situations, that kind of thing. So, that's, you know, when it's not about the physical condition of the house, and it's about the relationship there, the people sort of things, that one's the other side of that coin. And I will mention that, you know, implementing something like your tenant protection program, that's going to require staff capacity. Having an inspection program, of course, would require other staff capacity for inspectors.
I'm curious how H works, or would work. I'm not familiar with how that works.
So, it can work in a lot of different ways. This is a community land trust. And what community land trusts are, so oftentimes, a nonprofit organization that builds housing on land it owns. They sell the house, they continue owning the land. The agreement with selling the house is that the homeowner gets to live in there as the homeowner. They've gotten a, the housing at lower cost, because basically, the, the, the housing is subsidized, so the cost is bought down, so that the low-income household can afford it. When they sell it, they get limited equity. So, if the house is increased in price by $100,000, over the time they've lived there, are $200,000. They won't see all of that equity, but they would see limited equity. And the next household that buys that house, the next people who buy the house, they would get the house at a proportionately similar price. So, you know, assuming that incomes go up, and, and housing values go up, they would get the house at a price that was affordable to them. So, this is about long-term affordability, and helping a household get into homeownership. And so, that's what the community land trust is. What the city can do is a wide variety of things. The city can have land that it's banked, say, in item G, where the city's, say, got a piece of land that it owns, and it puts it into the community land trust for development at a low price, or, you know, selling the land for virtually nothing. And so, that helps buy down the cost of the housing, because they're not paying for land. The community land trust is, is purpose is to make sure that the housing stays affordable over, you know, a 50- or 100-year period, so it's a long period, long term. The city could, could help, say, with looking at opportunities to, to pay a proportion of, say, system development charges from some existing source of funding. So, that would be exempting, except you're not really exempting, you're paying the system development charges on behalf of the developer, the community land trust. You could look at assistance with development, maybe waiving fees, or extra help in doing the development. There's a number of other ways that a city can help in a land trust.
Does this only work for homes that are built for ownership, or does this work for?
Those are ownership units, yeah.
For rentals as well?
No, rental housing, the, the actions that the city can take to support affordable rental housing are pretty similar. And in fact, you're doing that right now on your transit center property?
Correct. Yeah, so, this community land trust partnership is really more about creating an affordable homeownership opportunity, whether or not that is through, and it could be new, new construction, if there's land available, it could be purchase of existing units, that can be done in different ways. There are, we say partner, you know, CLTs, there's some that are in the area that operate. And so, it would be about, you know, looking to further establish that partnership, and look for opportunities in Wilsonville to have affordable homeownership.
Thank you. And some, some of these seem like we kind of already do, like encouraging variety of housing types and designs, or encouraging accessible designs.
So, variety of housing types is a different thing than we're talking about, that you have already got. So, looking at maybe establishing a mix of housing requirements, like you have in Frog Pond East and South, so maybe you apply that over a greater geography, maybe the whole city. Or incentivizing development of manufactured, prefabricated, or modular housing. So, it's, it's expanding that idea of variety of housing types beyond what you're already doing.
Okay. That's it for now.
Commissioner Willard?
Level, number A, evaluate the re, or redesign, designate or rezoning land for housing. Reading through the description, this is just land, vacant land. This is not existing structures.
Right.
There's a, there's a lot of buzz around our community, around the vacant industrial or commercial land that we have, buildings, not land, buildings that we have available, and could those be repurposed? A is not that.
It is, correct. It is not that.
Okay.
So, I would say, though, that as written, it's about, you know, looking at land. So, I think the question I would have for you, because this is, you know, sort of, of land use, sort of straddling both the comprehensive plan designations, as well as the development code regulations that apply, I, I do think this is an action that, you know, if it is, because really, it's the building, there's the building piece to it, but really, what you're getting at is the underlying zoning of where that building is, and what is allowed in that building. And so, if you think that that's another thing to potentially include in a strategy like this, really, it's, because as I see it, this action is fundamentally about, you know, redesignating land, and maybe redesignating is not the right word. We've spent a lot of time going back and forth on these titles, and these titles can be amended, fixed, like, we're open to that. I think that this is where we want to try to hone in on the specificity. But really, it's, it's kind of about where uses are, and where they're allowed, and are there opportunities for, you know, additional housing potentially? I mean, of course, that is balanced, in an industrial example, with also a need for employment space. And so, I think those two are really kind of heavily, and are related. But I think if you were looking at this, let's say, in a comprehensive plan process, those are questions you could consider together. So, I think we can kind of note that idea, and consider, you know, whether or not that's something that we can kind of work into this, or if that really is a different and distinct idea. Because it is going to come up kind of at that comprehensive plan level first, and development code policy.
I'm trying to make sure I tracked with that. That, that means that the, when you said it will be part of the comprehensive, which is the it?
The A. So, the, the action, right? So, this is a type of action that would involve a comprehensive plan process, whether that is something more specific around this policy, or potentially, as part of a comprehensive plan update, and thinking about policies. So, so I would say, if, I think I'm hearing from you some feedback that you, maybe we think about buildings, and not just raw vacant land. I think that's something that we can think about, how does that fit into this action? Because I know this is one that we've communicated about a little bit, and I think there's, there's questions, there's things you would study around that, right? It's not, like, like you would with implementing this action, this one is pretty policy, land use heavy. And so, I think if this, if the planning commission thinks that, like, looking at buildings, not just land, is important, we want to be able to reflect that in here.
I feel like it's important, because I hear about it from our community a lot. Whether or not I agree with it, and think it's going to be fruitful, is, I'm not putting that into this. I'm just, I just know that there's a lot of questions being asked among my neighbors, about why aren't we using some of the vacant commercial or retail lands, or buildings, not lands, buildings, for, to solve some of our housing problems?
So, I do wonder if maybe, because I think, so if you were studying this action, right? Like, this is an action that you might be asking some of these questions, and as you're scoping this work, you know, thinking about what is or isn't it that makes reuse of an existing building feasible? Is that a design standard? Is it, is it feasible via the building code?
Is it livable?
Right, right. So, so I think maybe, I think this is helpful feedback, because I think if we're so limited to just looking at land, if there is a bigger question about just land and structure, not just land, that that's important to at least be putting as a consideration in this action. Because one of the nice things about the actions is that, you know, we're not actually scoping the projects out, but what will come in the HPS is a list of steps, you know, kind of an outline of, okay, here's how we're going to approach it. So, if there's questions, key questions we want to ask, I think this is helpful to note.
I like the idea of, of including the building side of it. And as, as you guys were talking through this, what really came to mind is, with A, I think, maybe stepping back and doing a fundamental assessment on, is, is our land mix within Wilsonville what it should be to support businesses and housing? Or are we over, do we have a higher percentage of commercial land than we may need, based on expected population growth, all of that kind of stuff? I know that's, you know, that's not exactly some of the public sentiment, but around the town center plan of, is it fundamentally what we're, what we need for now? I'll leave that one alone as well. But I think it, it comes to a point of, have we done the homework internally to understand whether or not we have the right mix of land in the city to support what we want to get? And that analysis could help drive redesignating land and/or buildings to support additional housing growth.
And the city's going to be engaging in a study that, that looks at your commercial and industrial land needs?
Okay.
Yeah, so, some of the work with the Willer project, there's different phases. The second phase of that includes what's called an economic opportunity analysis, which is kind of the commercial industrial version of this type of housing work. And so, I think this is helpful, because as we craft, you know, if this is an action that, you know, we want to explore more, and, you know, I'll just say hypothetically, if this was an action that did make it into the HPS, we wouldn't want to be operating it, you know, operating in a bubble. We would be acknowledging that, you know, this other work is also going to happen, and that's a consideration when you're looking at land and building, because you are looking at that balance, right? It's likely that, once you have both the output of this project, and the output of that project, where you're analyzing the spectrum of your land, and the city, and the buildings, and everything that goes with that, that that really positions us to then, you know, think about more comprehensively, in a potentially comprehensive plan update, how do we address this? So, so as I see, looking at, you know, how we would actually go about implementing A, if A were an action in the HPS, it is likely through some kind of more broad holistic look at the comprehensive plan, and not necessarily kind of in a bubble in its own project, without thinking about those bigger factors of land use. So, those are good points. Thank you.
And compare the historical projected growth of commercial, and the historical projected growth of residential, and which ones have outpaced the other? Not just what we currently think it's going to be, but what, what has history told us?
And I will say that, that some decision makers in other cities have wanted there to be, you know, an ideal, like, distribution of land, you know, this much land for housing, this much land for commercial. And I would say there isn't. Every city is, is unique. And so, looking historically at, at what happened, and what you've got today, and what are the future needs, I think is a, a better way of looking at it than, than trying to come to some ideal mix. Because I, in my opinion, an ideal mix doesn't exist for all cities.
Yeah, and I recall from early on, that the city was founded with, with some goals, because of its proximity to the interstate, and that it's, it is, it was expected to be an attractive location for industry.
Well, you're in the southern part of the Portland region, for all the advantages and disadvantages of that.
Yes. I have another comment, but I know my computer's timed out. Oh, the SDCs. That seems logical, to scale the SDCs to unit sizes. I think they already do somewhat, but I will just comment that we hear mixed things as the planning commission with respect to SDCs. We hear from the developers, oh my God, you know, clutching of pearls, the, our SDCs are so high. But then, when we talk to staff about it, there's justifiable reasons that, that particular development was higher, or what, or not. And so, it feels like that might be helpful and interesting to understand that. I don't know that it's going to be useful in, in developing, you know, increasing housing, but it might be something that we would, could benefit from.
Well, if you think about it, if a lot of the need is for smaller, less expensive units, and they're less expensive because they're physically smaller, then that is a way to incentivize some smaller units also.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm supportive of what's being recommended by the task force. I was curious about just maybe more trying to understand, for G, the grouping of those, because public land disposition, it's just seems easy, more, easier to accomplish than the other two. And so, just given those are grouped together, just more kind of conversations around that decision.
Well, I, I will say, at one level, public land disposition, at some point, the city had to acquire that land. And so, that's land you already own, versus land that you purposely are going out and purchasing and assembling with the intention of something specific happening on it. And let's say you had an urban renewal district, and the urban renewal district in it, one of the, the ways that you're of the, the ways that you're expecting, planning to use that funding was with parcel assembly. So you've got a, a funding source for it, you've got a, an expectation of what that would be doing, what kind of housing that would be doing. Then in that case, land banking and parcel assembly makes some sense. When we say land banking, I'm not, I don't think we're implying buy land and own it for 30 years and then do something with it.
Yeah, I think the term, yeah, I was kind of like, oh.
Sometimes it's, you know, buy land and two months later, do something with it. It's owning land and being able to say, this is what we want to see happening on it. Let's, let's issue, you know, an RFP and see what proposals we get for it. That's, that's a powerful position for a city to be in.
Okay.
Okay. Q. When we have SDCs and urban renewal as options, why, what's the benefit of Q?
So Q is acknowledging that there are some areas where you don't have the infrastructure that's needed. And, you know, some of the ways to get the infrastructure, we'll start with the easy one, get somebody to give you money. So lobby for state or federal funds. Let's say that doesn't do it all. And maybe there's an area where you need to do something like a local improvement district. So this is, is looking for those kind of opportunities and where that kind of solution makes sense. Because you certainly have vacant land that I assume needs, needs infrastructure to make that land developable. Is there ways that the city can support infrastructure in that area that, that fit with the amount of money you have, essentially? Kim, do you want to take that more?
Sure. I, I think it's about being kind of broad and strategic about knowing that while SDCs and urban renewal do exist, and they have been used throughout the development of infrastructure in the city, we also know that infrastructure continues to increase in price. And oftentimes, particularly in development of new urban areas, that cost becomes a consideration for the feasibility of that housing and/or the end product that you get and what that end product sells for. And so I think, just based on some prior work and acknowledgement that, you know, you can, you can collect SDCs every time you add new projects and you reevaluate what your SDC, you know, formula is, those SDCs have the potential to go up as well. And so then that is increasing the cost of housing. It's sort of, it's a cycle that feeds itself, right? And so I think to, to the degree to which we are just thinking about flexibility and continuing to see what funding sources are available, the state continues to try to address this through different, they've got some revolving loan programs they're looking into. I, I feel like every session this comes up, there's, so it's, you know, there might be funding sources we're not aware of yet that could be something that we look into. I think this is really an action that is rooted in being open-minded and creative because while, while the other types of funding sources you mentioned have worked historically for us, that isn't necessarily guaranteed that we'll be able to rely on those two types of funding sources alone going forward.
Okay. And I guess if, if it was more focused on the identifying and utilizing state and federal funding to help support infrastructure, I think I would be more on board with this one. I think the, the local improvement district is what kind of threw me off. And, and maybe it's just that I need more info on exactly how a local improvement district would work. Because at the end of the day, SDCs are taking a wider distribution of, of cost and, and spreading it out, where a local improvement district is concentrating it all into one area. And that doesn't seem like that would make housing more affordable. Because you're still paying for the same infrastructure, you've just got a smaller area to distribute it about.
It, it can be often used in a more targeted manner for very specific and localized improvements. So, you know, let's say there's, where we've seen it used, and we haven't used it in a while, but we've talked about it in places where, you know, maybe there's a frontage improvement that affects, you know, three properties, right? But it's critical and isn't a whole system-wide impact potentially that an LID might actually end up being a better option for that? And that then is something that is sort of then supported by the development that's occurring and the properties upon which that development is happening as opposed to being dispersed across the city. That's probably a really overly generalized way of explaining it. But, you know, it, it might be that in certain circumstances, that's a better approach than just adding another project to the SDC project list. So, because the thing about that is, when you have a lot of projects, there's also a lot of projects on the list. And so there's a time component to SDCs that we don't necessarily always have the funding immediately available when it might be needed. So it's just another kind of tool in the toolkit.
Maybe this one, we, we lead with federal and state funds, and then the, the other options are, are other options.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, my priorities, what, what jumped out at me, A, O, F, and H slash G, because those kind of seem to go together in terms of this list overall. Yeah.
Okay. So I want to observe that it's 7:17. Eating into your, your normal meeting time?
This is completely normal for us. How much more do you have?
Honestly, there was, there was nothing more other than a, a next step slide.
So I just think if there's any further thoughts, that, because the next time we come back to you for a work session is going to be once we have more of a, an actual draft of these documents. And so we really are, because we recognize too that, you know, your role in implementing some of these, you, you have more familiarity with some of these than others. And when it comes down to a lot of the decision-making, you know, your advice will be helpful to council, but city council is going to have to weigh a lot of these, you know, the priorities, but also the costs, the time, the resources. And I think that's why those couple of items that are sort of just there are going to be really critical to that conversation. And so I think, you know, for us, anything that you have to offer that will help shape, you know, particularly for the land use items, I, I did hear a lot of good feedback here. You know, I think this is just an opportunity for you to get that on the record so that we're able to convey that to the city council as well as, you know, the task force if there is further conversation about actions and why, you know, if there's something you feel strongly about that needs to be included or that is important, it's helpful for us to know that because then the task force might ask, oh, well, the planning commission knows more about this, what do they think? So I think if there's any further parting thoughts, we'll take them. Otherwise, I think you've given us a lot of good feedback to work with.
All right. Last call.
And T, encourage accessible design. Is that relative to, say, ADA design, handicap design, or is that accessible, is that community access, access to the different designs?
Looking at things like the universal design standard or lifelong housing certification. So they go beyond what ADA does. So it's about, you know, specific to a unit or a housing structure. It can also be about visitability. So, you know, not having steps to get into the unit, for instance, because you often do have steps. So it's not about, it's not about public access, it's about access for people with disabilities to the housing.
Okay.
I really stood out to me as well, something that's really important, I think, is to preserve what we have, support preservation of affordable rental housing. I really appreciate that one. And I was curious, for K, has the city or in county ever considered like a sliding scale for property taxes to allow homeownership to property taxes? Are often quite a bit of the monthly payment, but just something to consider.
I'm not sure that sliding scale is, is that allowed?
I'm not sure. I think it's, it's a good question we can ask. I know the city has not, the city has not, you know, ever really pursued an action of this nature in terms of home buyer assistance. But there are, you know, there are other programs that have been done, but it would take, I think, some additional research to figure out how a program like that could be built in Wilsonville.
And I know that, that some cities like Salem use urban renewal to, to provide property tax relief in certain cases. So, so it's very specific to the unit. So that's, that's, John Day also did that, so.
Yeah, I think my final just thoughts on, I agree about the preserving what people already have. I really, yeah, appreciate that. And then, and making sure that that current one related to E is like, it's safe housing. There's, able to access and stay in accessible housing and for rental, making sure it's safe. That would be the highest priority in my mind. And, and safe in terms of, I think this is, could be related to our next agenda item, but like climate ready too. So thinking about, yeah, air conditioning or heat pumps and access to those kinds of things, but we'll see.
And that feeds a little bit into the idea of weatherization. And sometimes those weatherization programs.
Yep. Thanks.
I don't think I have anything else. I appreciate all the work that y'all have put into this. Yeah, this is great and excited to see how it progresses moving forward.
I agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Looks like next up is an informational session from the Climate Action Plan.
And for this, we have our natural resource manager, Kerry Rappold, who's our project manager on this. So look forward to hearing from Kerry to introduce this project to you. So go ahead, Kerry.
All right. Well, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, as Dan mentioned, I'm Kerry Rappold, the city's natural resources program manager. And I'm here tonight to give you an introduction to the Climate Action Plan. We're just getting started with the process in many ways. The project started in August, but we're just really doing some of the initial work at this point. And I wanted to just give you an overview tonight with the expectation that I'll be coming back with the consultant when we have more specific things to discuss, especially when we start looking at the strategies and actions. I can't see my PowerPoint. Is that actually up?
Kerry, are you able to share your screen and do your PowerPoint? It would probably work better that way.
Oh, okay.
Just because then you can control it.
Okay, sorry. I didn't, I thought you were going to bring, put it up. So just, just a sec here. Sorry for the delay. Just be one minute.
Do you, we can pull it up here if you want Dan to control it. You'd have to tell him when to switch slides.
No, I got it.
Okay.
So, just wanted to get it open. Can you see that now?
Yep.
All right. Sorry for the delay there. So, yeah, I just want to walk you through tonight what we'll be doing with the Climate Action Plan. This is a city council goal that was in the fiscal year 2023, '25 goals. And so it's certainly been of something of interest to the city council for quite some time. At one point, we were looking to align our plan with Clackamas Counties, and they went through a very extensive process of developing theirs, but it never actually got adopted. So there was a lot of work put into that plan, and there are some things that we're going to make use of because their work also included the city of Wilsonville. So, so there's some things that already have been done that we can actually look back in time in some ways to see what, what some of that information was five years ago as compared to today. So it's helpful in that respect. So when we're looking at climate change and how we might approach that, there's really two ways to look at it. There's this idea of addressing the causes, which is the mitigation part of it, where we can look at, you know, the idea of switching to clean energy, reducing our waste, sustainable transportation. And then there's the adaptation, which comes at a point where climate change has affected us in terms of, you know, whether it's hurricanes or other, other things that have changed in terms of, you know, the heat that we're dealing with. And so that, that looks at things like disaster preparedness, restoration of our natural areas. And then there's sort of these elements in between that we can do that really kind of address both aspects in many respects, such as smart growth. So really, the, the paradigm, and it'll be very much a part of how we go forward in terms of identifying, especially the strategies and actions that we're looking at. You can think of avoidance, which might be something like driving less. And then there's this idea of reducing our energy use, which maybe that could come through weatherization of a house or added insulation. And then we can switch to other, you know, green sources of energy. At this point, the city, through the PGE Green Power Program, all city facilities are actually 100% powered through green energy. And at this point, the community use of green energy is at 14%. So we, we meet the, the objectives at this point in terms of being a green city, but we could certainly see, you know, a growth in that too, in terms of that type of energy use. And then there's this idea of removal, sequestering that carbon dioxide, carbon that, you know, trees can take up. And so, you know, that's, that's an aspect that we can look at, especially as we look towards some other opportunities that we have in the city. And then there's, you know, a possibility of looking at offset, something like carbon credits, things that are traded in the market. So in regards to developing the plan, basically, we have three, three approaches to this. The initial is the analysis in terms of looking at it. And then there's some extensive modeling that we're going to do. And then the public engagement and how we, you know, take this out within community. And so under the context review, we're trying to understand what we're doing currently. And so there's three, four documents that we looked at in regards to this, and they've, they've completed the work with this at this point. The project started in August, so they've been working at it for about three months. And so that included the comprehensive plan, the transportation systems plan, the urban forest management plan. SMART has their own climate action plan that will be, you know, incorporating what they're doing. And then also their, their commute options that they've done as far as their work. And you've probably heard about this, there's some actions that are already underway at the state level, the climate-friendly and equitable communities. So we'll be incorporating various policies, requirements that are at the state level also, as well as looking at how we can still maybe have potential alignment with some of the things that Clackamas did with their plan. So as we move through this process, basically, we're going to sort of look at the existing conditions, look at what could happen in the future, and then basically, you know, come up with some types of strategies or actions that can get us to a low-carbon scenario, as it's called. And then ultimately, all of this will go into the development of a draft plan. There'll be opportunities, as I said, to discuss those strategies and actions, and then how they inform the draft plan, and then what gets recommended within that, and then the review and feedback that we'll have, and then the final plan that will be presented to both the planning commission and the city council. As I mentioned, one of the, the other steps is the technical modeling. There's a very detailed and extensive model that looks at our greenhouse gas emissions. And so at this point, we provided a lot of information to the consultant in terms of our population, employment, land use, transportation, and then the energy consumption that we have at the local level as far as what the city uses. And that includes everything from our facilities to our water use, our, our sewer, how we spend energy or provide energy to run our how we spend energy or provide energy to run our treatment plants. So all that is brought into this model. And ultimately, it provides the opportunity then to develop the strategies and actions. We'll have these two scenarios before the low-carbon scenario, which is what's called the business as usual. That basically takes into account what we're doing currently, what exists in terms of the approaches that the city's taking and the things that are happening within the community. And then the businesses plan really takes into account all these other policies and initiatives, whether they're at the state level, at the regional level, at the county level, that will influence what we do as far as, you know, what we do as far as climate change going forward. And then, like I said, the strategies and actions will then ultimately inform this low-carbon scenario, which will be the basis for the plan and what we bring forward. So in terms of public engagement, we've finalized a strategy for this. We are going to be working with both the Planning Commission. I, I actually did a presentation to the DEI committee last night. The city council has had a presentation, the same one, back in October. And then we'll be following up in, in, in January, February with some of those meetings where we'll talk about those strategies and actions. Concurrent with that, in January, we are going to have an open house and then also a business forum with the, the businesses within the community. Currently, there's a Let's Talk Wilsonville site that has information about the plan, a frequently asked questions section. And there's also a community survey on there that will be open to the public through the end of November. In addition, we've set up a staff advisory committee that is made up of, excuse me, representatives from all the departments within the city. And so they'll be checking in at those various points too. We have a meeting with that staff advisory committee next Monday to talk about some of these same things. And then ultimately, we'll have a report that'll be prepared about the public engagement. So looking at the schedule and the next steps and where we're going from here, we're, we're basically wrapping up that number one in terms of the data request and, and some of the early planning for the public engagement. They are now, they've inputted all the information into the model. We had a delay with getting our data from Northwest Natural. So it's set it back about a week or so in terms of our schedule, but nothing too significant. And then they'll be working through December, developing some of these strategies and actions based on the modeling. And then we'll be presenting that information come January and February. And then ultimately, this will lead to, you know, the low-carbon scenario that we choose as far as the basis for the plan. With the expectation that, you know, we'll be looking at the draft plan sometime late spring with adoption following shortly after that. So I just wanted to take some time tonight, like I said, to introduce the plan to you, some of the next steps that we'll have. And just get any of your initial questions or comments, any input in terms of the planning process I've described, or anything that you feel is really important to note.
I don't think I have any questions, but my day job, working for the city of Tigard, we do a lot of heavy climate work. And so I don't know if you've had a chance to connect with our team there. But one of the things, and I heard it a little bit here, is starting internally with city operations and really being able to like practice, if you end up preaching to the community like, oh, you should try doing these things or making this change, like really implementing that first in, within the city, I think is a good way to start and just kind of see, yeah, the, the challenges there and just being able to, yeah, start there, I think is really helpful. The other thing was the interest from youth, like high school, middle school. There's a lot of, a passion around climate. And so that's something that when you do engagement, it might be worth reaching out to the schools or connecting with teachers that might have some classes that you can talk to the students about and get input there. So, yeah.
Yes, good suggestion. Thank you, Commissioner. So one of the things that we have currently with the city is an energy education squad. And we're working with the Energy Trust of Oregon. And so we've already implemented some, some things through that, that squad. And just recently, the city developed a draft energy policy. And so, yeah, I think we're trying to model, you know, what we should be doing in terms of moving forward and addressing climate change.
Thank you. My only comment is I'd love to see a future version of the Climate Action Plan to include water usage.
Yeah, that's, it's definitely an important aspect, especially when we look at what does that cost in terms of supplying water to the community and the energy consumption associated with that.
But even just that water is not an unlimited resource, even though we are right on the Willamette. This new pipeline going into Washington County is a big reminder of how blessed we are being next to the river. But still, water, water usage would be an interesting one, just for a future goal for the city council to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll second that. I mean, one of the things when I was looking at this and, and one of the things that popped in my head as I ride around the city is, you know, we have a lot of non-functional grass, you know, grass that requires a lot of maintenance, whether it be, you know, fuel to mow the lawns, whether it be water to, to keep it green. And, and looking at that and, and code changes to help discourage non-functional grass, I think is a positive benefit to a climate action plan. So something that I would love to see considered. And then I, I second Commissioner Hendricks's talk about, you know, getting the middle school and high school kids involved. And, you know, I would love to see if part of the outreach plan included, you know, having those groups involved in, in part of this process of developing the Climate Action Plan and, and coming up with suggestions and working through some of this. If, if that's not part of the engagement plan, I would highly recommend it because I think getting that group, they're already passionate about it. And so it's something that they can also kind of get their feet wet into civic service and those types of things. So I think there's a, you know, multi-benefit of, of doing, doing that if it's not already part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kerry. Appreciate the presentation and look forward to seeing it here coming up soon.
All right, I appreciate your time tonight. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you as well. Okay, looks like the last two informational items are just action minutes and PC work program. No staff presentation. Mr. Polly, anything to provide on that or?
No. Some of you heard the discussion of the rent burden meeting that were tentatively scheduled prior to your next meeting in December. We will follow up on the details of that in short order.
As long as there's cookies, I'll be there. Fine, I'll bring them. Jeez.
Thank you. Any other questions? And I'd also say, reminder, Frog Pond is at council on this coming Monday for adoption. If you want to tune in.
Ms. Bates, shall I see you came on camera. You got anything for us?
No, just wanted to say hi, give you a little wave. See you guys all next month.
All right. Have a good evening. I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned, 7:40 PM.